I'm showing we're live on my screen.
And we are live on YouTube.
Excellent. Well, thank you, everybody, for gathering today. Happy Zoom. I appreciate everybody's attendance and working through some technical issues while we get started here. I think Kevin, if you can mute yourself, I'm getting the feedback from. Before we go, I just want to make a statement that due to COVID-19 pandemic, the county, Cuyahoga County Administration Building is closed. Is closed to public at this time. As a result, this meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with State of Ohio House Bill 197. Interested, interested persons may access the meeting via livestream using the link that was provided on the agenda. What the comment was. Able to be submitted in writing to later than 1:00 p.m. today. We did receive one comment. That person is also with us in the room today via email through the county planning.
Mike, ever hear somebody's feedback? So I don't know if you could put your phones on mute until you need to say something or like to speak if that's okay?
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna mute everybody and then, Mr. Chairman, you'll have to unmute yourself when I do that. Okay, yeah, you're, I think you're good now.
Okay. Okay, if we're ready to go here, then I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Hello, everybody, and thank you for joining us today. Unfortunately, this is our new normal and we're all trying to get used to this, but it seems like over the last six weeks here anyways, I think we've all gotten better at this. But so with that being said, call the meeting to order and if we could call the roll, please clerk.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Annette.
Mayor Boebes. Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Councilperson Brown.
Here.
Mr. Collier.
Here.
Mr. Dever.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
Mayor DeSico.
Here.
Mayor Camala. Mayor Prosec.
Here.
Mayor Sellers.
Here.
Councilperson Simon.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Annette. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the February 13th, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion by.
Motion by Mayor Brennan, seconded by Councilwoman Simon. Is there any questions or comments on the, on the meeting minutes or adjustments to those minutes? Hearing none, I moved to approve the message or moved to approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those against, that motion carries. Is there anything under old business today?
No, sir. We don't have anything under new business.
Okay, we'll move to new business and the first resolution on agenda for today. If the clerk could please read the, the, the resolution.
A resolution approving with the conditions preliminary plan phases three and four for the Sanctuary of Olmstead and the Preserves of Olmstead PRD subdivision located in Olmstead Township. That's 200514.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Annette. I believe we have Megan Chaney here to speak on this item first.
Yes, hello, everyone. Um, the agenda item, as Annette said, is resolution number 200514-a regarding the preliminary plan approval for phases three and four of the Sanctuary and the Preserve of Olmstead PRD subdivision in Olmstead Township. The application was submitted by Anthony Valori of Valori Builders. The property is located in Olmstead Township on the south side of John Road between Fitch and Columbia Roads. I'd like to recognize a few people with us today that will be able to answer any questions later on. There are representatives from Valori Builders and Polte Homes. Trustee Janine Crest is on the line as well from Olmstead Township and also Hugh Bloxage, Chief Section Engineer with the Sanitary Engineering Group from Public Works. The project history, the master subdivision plan and preliminary plans for phases one and two for the Sanctuary and Preserve. Were granted approval by the County Planning Commission this past February. The Sanctuary and Preserve consists of five phases with homes being built by two different home builders, Valori Builder and Polte Homes. Valori will be designing and building homes on the Sanctuary portion of the development and Polte will be building homes on the Preserve portion of the development. Overall, the Sanctuary and Preserve subdivision will create 136 new single-family homes, detached residential sublots, rather, to be completed in five phases. Seven new public roads will be created consisting of 6,411 lineal feet of street pavement, street pavement. Roughly 13,000 lineal feet of sidewalk and 5,000 lineal feet of walking path will also be created. The 13.66 acres of open space will be contained within four separate blocks within the subdivision. And stormwater capture and management features will encompass 3.12 acres throughout the development. Phases three and four, which we're reviewing today, are in the Preserve portion of the subdivision with homes to be constructed by Polte Homes. The preliminary plans for phases three and four propose the creation of 57 sublots with 28 sublots in phase three and 29 in phase four. These two phases will also feature 1,688 lineal feet of roadway, 3,720 lineal feet of sidewalk, and 1,101 lineal feet of walking path. Block A is partially contained within phase three and contains 3.67 acres of open space and 1.61 acres of stormwater management features. Phase four contains neither of these open space nor stormwater management features, but it's adjacent to block A. The commission just reviewed and conditionally approved the master subdivision plan and phases one and two in February. But the subdivision regulations require that each phase within a subdivision be reviewed and applied for as a separate preliminary plan. So in accordance with section 104.5 of the subdivision regulations, the appropriate agencies were asked to review and provide comment on the preliminary plan phases three and four of the Sanctuary and Preserve subdivision. The planning commission staff has reviewed the preliminary plan for phases three and four of the Sanctuary and Preserve and has also considered the, the comments from the reviewing agencies. And based on these reviews, county planning staff recommends conditional approval of the preliminary plan for phases three and four of the Sanctuary and Preserve. Now, most of these conditions that are, appear in the staff report and in the resolution are, are, were in phase one and two and master plan conditional approval. But they have carried over because most of those same conditions relate to phases three and four and for consistency's sake, we've carried those over. For the most part, the applicant has provided proof that progress has been made on most of these conditions, if not all of them. That being said, the, the, the conditions are as follows. With conditions regarding the sanitary sewer and roadway infrastructure. The recommendation that written approval will be needed from the North Olmstead Weasewater Treatment Plant. That they will be able to accept any additional sanitary flows from this subdivision and that is in process. The, the sewer permit to install needs to be approved by the Ohio EPA and sent to Public Works and apparently that is in the works as well. Formal legal agreement must be received from the Renaissance agreeing to cap future expansion such that additional sanitary flow won't overwhelm the system. And during the improvement plan stage, there are two turns within phase three that do not meet minimum curve radius, but so those will need to be examined very closely during improvement plan stage and fixed if determined unacceptable by Public Works. As for storm sewer drainage and stormwater retention, those have, those conditions have to do with providing more clarity at the improvement plan stage and ensuring that proper access to stormwater management's features is provided. Wetlands, those are, are the same as the, as the master plan and phases one and two conditions. The applicant must purchase 0.3 acres of forested wetlands and 2 acre, 0.2 acres of non-forested wetland credits. The applicant, Valori Builders, have submitted to me proof that this purchase has been made and we're just in the process of verifying that. Also, an agreement between the applicant and Olmstead Township regarding wetland setbacks must be reached. Once those wetland setbacks have been agreed to, they just need to be demarcated and reflected in, in updated plans. The fourth condition regards the declaration of covenants, updates to the HOA agreements. Those are in process, apparently, and the, the fifth condition being that only after all these conditions have been made will improvement plans be formally accepted by Public Works. So with that being said, Sean, I don't know if you want to go back to the, the timeline. So this is actually, you'll see this again. This is a new flow chart that's been included in the subdivision regulation updates. But that red box indicates where in the process this subdivision is. After this preliminary plan approval, the, once conditions are met or they can submit improvement plans to, to Public Works. The preliminary plan will be good for a period of two years. And during that two-year time period, conditions have to be met, improvements have to be constructed and inspected, and then they can apply for a final plat.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Appreciate that explanation. I, I believe the applicant here and also trustee Crest is here to speak on the issue. Trustee Crest, would you like to make a comment? I'm not sure if the trustee had heard me or not. Okay, Mr. Valori, I think you're on the line. Can, do you, would you like to make a comment in regards to this item on the agenda?
Lisa, I need help.
I hear you now, Jean.
Oh, okay. I'm at the office. I couldn't figure out. I thought maybe my microphone wasn't on.
That's all right. We can hear you.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Tony, Tony Valori here. Can you hear me? Tony, we can hear you. I'm, since trustee Crest has come on first, I'm gonna let her speak on the issue first. Is that all right?
Yes, thank you.
All right, trustee Crest, the floor is yours.
I am quite a novice at this. I, I, you know, age and inability is, is hampering me right now, but thank you so much for the opportunity. I just want to say we appreciate the work that Megan and the planning department, county planning has done. And we understand all of these caveats at this point. We are comfortable with the move forward. I think there's a lot of goodwill going on and we are excited to see the start of this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, trustee Crest. Mr. Valori, floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. We also are excited with, and we believe that we have and are in the process of getting everything dealt with and hopefully have everything completed within the first and second week of June. This past Tuesday night, the committee in North Olmstead did approve the flow and capacity into the sanitary for this project. So we thank you very much for looking at this and, and we hope that we can get this started sooner and later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valori. Can I have a motion on the resolution?
Byrne, so moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by?
Mayor Sellers.
Thank you, mayor. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yes, honey.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
I guess I just want to say I'm not comfortable with all these conditions and the wetland implication and potential water. There's just too much going on in connection with the mobile park ties into it. So my position is I'm not comfortable with supporting the, the staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you, councilwoman. Does anybody want to speak on that? Hugh Bloxage, I know you're on the line. Would you like to speak about any of the, the sanitary items? I know, I think it's specific to the wetlands if I'm, is that right, councilwoman?
Specifically, yes. The wetland implications, the, everything that goes along with uprooting a whole ecosystem that abuts other neighborhoods, the water, the, the wildlife, the mitigation typically is someplace else. It doesn't help the county.
Sure. Megan, if I'm not mistaken, so there's obviously a wetlands, there's a relocation effort that takes place. Can you speak a little bit further on that, Megan?
I can, and I'll also defer to Sean as well, but I can say this, it was, it was a highly modified environment. It was a, it was a golf course. So it was, it was, again, a highly modified environment. The wetlands are all, they're, they're not high-quality wetlands. There are, there are questions to, regarding the drainage. And the recommendation to purchase, do a wetlands purchase was, I believe, done through, recommended through the Army Corps of Engineers and seconded by the Soil and Water Conservation District. But that said, I mean, soil and conservation, water district, although they're not on the, the phone call today. You know, they do a very good and thorough job of holding developers' feet to the fire. And they did recommend conditional approval based on those two requirements. So we were going off of their expertise.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Megan, for that explanation. Is there any other further comments? On the motion then to approve, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those against?
Simon.
Councilwoman Simon is noted. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could, could we move to item number two on, under new business, resolution 200514-b? Or I'm sorry, Annette, could you read the, the resolution into the record, please?
Yes. Adopting and recommending approval to the Cuyahoga County Council Comprehensive Amendments to the Cuyahoga County Land Development Regulations Article One, Subdivision Plating Rules for the Unincorporated Areas of Cuyahoga County, Ohio, commonly known as the Cuyahoga County Subdivision Regulation.
Okay, thank you, Annette. And if you could, Megan, could you speak on this item?
Yes, absolutely. So again, this is in, this is a mouthful. The staff is requesting that the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission adopt comprehensive updates to the Cuyahoga County Land Development Regulations Article One, Subdivision Plating Rules for the Unincorporated Areas of Cuyahoga County, Ohio. And those are commonly referred to as the subdivision regulations. And that County Planning Commission recommends approval of these updates to county council. With us today to, to speak on this matter are trustee Janine Crest from Olmstead Township, trustee John Finley from Chagrin Falls Township. Also on the line is Dave Markward, Design and Construction Administrator and County Engineer at County Public Works. Trustees Crest and Finley are available to make comment or answer questions later on. And Dave Markward was very instrumental, as were many people at Public Works with updating aspects of the subdivision regulations, particularly in regards to Public Works role during the improvement plan stage. So just to give a quick background, according to chapter 711 of the ORC, a county planning commission shall adopt rules to govern the plating and subdivision of land falling within its jurisdiction. Cuyahoga County first adopted subdivision regulations in 1941 and have been, those have been amended several times in the last 80 years with the latest amendment occurring in 2010. So staff from the agencies involved in reviewing subdivision regulations, including county planning, Public Works, Soil and Water Conservation District, Cuyahoga County Law Department, recognized the need over the past several years to update the subdivision regulations to reflect, among other things, the, the current form of county government, the current regulations still mention the county commissioners. The need to streamline and simplify information regarding subdivision requirements and procedures, clarify issues of ambiguity, provide better defined processes for the review of improvement plans, include new requirements pertaining to environmental standards and development, and the update of an establishment of fees to recover costs in administering the subdivision regulations. Those really have to do with improvement plans. To date, County Public Works head was spending a lot of resources reviewing these detailed construction plans. And this update provides them a structure to recoup some of those costs. So way back in 2017, these reviewing agencies began a comprehensive review to update the subdivision regulations to reflect the needs that I've just outlined. So once those county reviewing agencies completed their review and editing process, the drafted amendments were sent to the two unincorporated townships in Cuyahoga County, Olmstead Township and Chagrin Falls Township for their review and feedback. Their feedback was incorporated into the document and the document was then presented for adoption. So a quick outline of some of the proposed modifications. Just, there, there are quite a few, but just to give you a kind of a bird's eye view of each, of each chapter. And then we can, we'll happily answer any questions that I don't cover. Chapter 101, general provisions, really the biggest thing was inclusion of the, the county's complete streets advocacy program and reflects sidewalk and pedestrian circulation requirements. In chapter 102, definitions, there were several, but probably the most important was the inclusion of county council and county executive to reflect the, the current form of county government. County Public Works was updated rather than mention of the, the county engineer and sanitary engineer. And inclusion of county department of law rather than, and law director, now that county planning commission seeks counsel from the law department rather than county prosecutor. For chapter 103, in minor subdivisions, a determination of completeness was added in this and every other step in this, in the subdivision application process. Rather than just sandwiched at the very end of the regulations, just to state that a complete packet is needed in order to get the review process started. The subdivision regulations have also been reorganized by subject matter, i.e. minor subdivision. And within the major subdivisions, we have it organized by preliminary plan, improvement plan, and, and final plat rather than by submission requirements and procedure. There ended up having to be a lot of back and forth on both staff and developers part looking for various timeframe requirements and submission requirements. So that's been a, a, a complete reorganization. Design standards within minor subdivisions have also been added to minor subdivisions to make sure that if a minor subdivision results from a lot split within a major subdivision, that those design requirements will be the same and reflected in the surrounding community within the major subdivision. The major subdivision flow chart that was shown during the Sanctuary and Preserve review was another big thing that we added to try to clarify the, the pretty extensive process of a major subdivision. And hopefully that will help users along the line on both the developer side and, and county staff and township staff side. Let's see. In the, in the other aspects of the major subdivision review and updates, overall, again, the chapters have been reorganized to subject matter rather than submission requirements and procedure. Within the preliminary discussion portion, it was amended to state that this preliminary discussion stage will be required at the discretion of the county planning director rather than at the discretion of the developer. And this is really not a portion that the county planning commission sees a lot, but it's a very important step in making sure that various regulations are followed and to see if, you know, the, if, if, if a development is, is, is logical in any way. So within the preliminary plan, again, it was, it was reorganized to clarify timeframe, forms and fees. And another big addition was the addition of a requirement for a hydraulic study that may be required at the discretion of Public Works. More and more, we're finding that in order for Public Works and those engineers involved in reviewing stormwater to make a responsible decision in terms of stormwater and drainage, a hydraulic study is often needed even to see if a development is possible. And that's particularly true in Olmstead Township. In regards to improvement plans, that section has been greatly expanded. Fees and submission timelines to review have been added to provide clarity to the submission requirements and procedures. Improvement plan specifications have been added, as have application specifications, number of copies required, and stormwater management requirements at the county and township levels. And administrative procedures have also been updated for the review of improvement plans to conform with preliminary plan and final plat chapters as well. Another important aspect of this part was a beefed-up as-built submittal before a developer can apply for a final plat. They need to submit as-built plans of the built infrastructure. And we've very clearly defined when those as-built plans need to be submitted. So the engineers at the county have time to review those and make sure that they conform with the final plat that will be received. Section 104.7, final plats. This remains largely the same, but we've included references for both bonding requirements and the, the as-built submission requirements in regards to final plat application. So chapter 105, moving along. These construction of improvements, construction guarantees has, we've clarified to make sure that the developer is responsible for notifying Public Works and the township about the approaching expiration of maintenance guarantees and to request the, and the performance of a final inspection. It also clarifies that only once a favorable inspection has been completed will a release of those, those bonds or guarantees take place. Chapter 106, design standards. Centralized mailboxes were included to recognize the current U.S. Postal Service requirement for, for centralized mailboxes in developments. Street trees were separated into its own section to recognize the importance of street trees within a new subdivision. And we've updated the open space requirement. We've increased it. It used to be 10% open space within the county regulations and we've increased that to 20%. Recognizing the need for open space and also to be consistent with township regulations. In chapter 107. Just the fees were added to establish reinspection fees and include the, the fees. just the fees were added to establish reinspection fees and include the fee schedule for all planned submittals, that's now in Appendix A. And then in the appendix, there was a sheet that detailed the required final plat certifications and statements. County Law Department has advised us that that does not need to be part of the adopted subdivision regulations, that can be a standalone document. And that makes sense if, you know, something needs to be updated, we can be a little bit more nimble. Alternatively, the fee schedule that used to be a separate document is now incorporated into, into the appendix because that, that has to stand for approval through the commission and the county council as well. So the financial aspect, there's, there's no cost to these. The updates, the next steps is that once, if county council or county planning commission approves of these updates, the proposed amendments will be forwarded to Cuyahoga County Council for approval. And once approved by county council, the approved regulations will be formally accorded, recorded at the county fiscal office. So are there any questions? Or would the, the commission like to address the trustees or Dave Markward?
This is county councilwoman Chantel Brown. I'm just curious, sometimes we have some differences of beliefs and opinions on the council side. If there should be any objections or concern once we bring this to the full body, can you share what the process or procedure would be in such a case?
You know, I would, I would assume that we would, we would request what, why they, they decide, determined to to vote it down and make whatever changes they would suggest or provide any kind of confirmation they would needed. And then I'm assuming it would, it would need to come back before the, the planning commission, but maybe Melissa, you could weigh in on that?
And I could chime in too, if it's okay. When it comes to, this is Sean speaking, I don't know if you can see what's showing up on everybody's video. When it comes to, and it comes from Brown, it was a little quiet, I think you were asking about there's a, if there's a concern, conflict between what's being recommended by our commission versus the township commission, if I'm not mistaken. And if, if, if that conflict does arise, there's going to have to be some process back and forth to work between the two organizations to resolve those things. It does be kind, kind of become a chicken and egg who comes first, what should go first. Generally, for all intents and purposes, how this sets up is, I don't have the, a slide with the, that flow chart. But generally, the process starts with the township. And then we become part of that process after that initial discussion with, with the township. Because they have the zoning regulations, the zoning regulations that are really going to help shape most of the development, where our regulations are more about how the land is subdivided and how the improvements go in related to that. But anytime there is a conflict, hopefully we, we try to work together through our, through our process, all those different charts you saw, to avoid those, but if they do arise, then yes, we would have to, we'd just have to step back and, and, and work together.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was, I was, I was going to share with Sean, I appreciate that. The, the greater concern for me is, is actually our county council members as it relates to us voting this forward. Even with our last resolution, it just went through. Councilwoman Simon had some reservations, so I would, you know, respectfully desire to know what the steps would be in that case. Should we have other council members, once we convene the full body, that may have some concerns or reservations regarding the changes for like this matter? So I can't recall who represents Jean's district, hi Jean, we see you now. But I think it's either, I think it may be Gallagher, but I'm not sure. Okay, so Gallagher, so yeah, so, and he can, he can be quite a stickler for details too. So I just want to get ahead of anything potentially and, and, and just, you know, get that, get that perspective clear as we move forward.
If there are, if there are issues as this moves, assuming this moves on to the county council level, depending what those issues are, we could, there would be a process where we could be an iterative process back and forth with the commission to work through those issues. Ultimately, though, county council has full authority over this as it is an ordinance of county council. But we could, depending what those issues are, we could help define that process as those issues arise. But it could be something where county council sets a directive, or it could be an iterative process where we go back and forth with the commission to, to work through a particular issue or provide additional clarity to an issue.
Okay, thank you, and I'll yield to councilwoman Simon, if she's, if she's good and has no concerns, I anticipate that this that this shouldn't, shouldn't create an issue, but I always like to prepare for the worst and hope for the best, so.
Thank you. Colleague, it's Sunny, Simon?
Go ahead, councilwoman.
Yeah, I like these recommendations. I didn't see in there, thank you, Councilwoman Brown, for this, bringing this up. It's always an interesting dynamic with the county council, you know, partaking in decision-making with the, with the township. And it's something we're just going to have to figure out and, and see how that dynamic's going to go forward. But with regard to this recommendation, I like this, the subdivision rule. But are there anything, is there anything about fees in here about reviewing, you know, reviewing these plans, would that be in here when developers come in and there's an extra review necessitated? Do we address that here? For extra, for extra, okay, what did we say, extension? What about when we have to do it for extra review? Should there be another fee for that?
Well, we added a couple of fees, and, and just so I don't lose track of this, Chairman Dever,
Thank you.
Director Collier had raised his hand, so if we could go back to him at some point. As far as the fees, we did add a couple of fees for the planning commission side. Generally, when we see changes, we see them in the form of modifications.
Okay.
We added a fee of $500 for that. And then also, if there's an extension that's requested, I don't believe that's a very common application we get, except when we, we enter into economic slowdowns and developers like to keep their applications approvals valid. So we added two fees for that. The, the larger, the, the, a more important component is the, Megan had touched upon, was related to public works and fees that they are now, will be able to collect related to their plan review and inspection. Now build into that, that would include if they have to go out and do re-inspections or they have to continue to do multiple plan reviews. It's, if, and, and I know Dave Markward's on the line, but I believe how this is set up is it's an hourly, it's on an hourly basis based on what it costs for that employer, that, that service to be provided. So that would be billed back to the developer for those additional reviews.
Okay.
Sean, the
That Dave Markward?
Yes, this is Dave Markward. The fee structure was set up to collect two and a half percent of the estimated cost of the improvements. What that does, it, it gets an amount of money that should typically cover the cost of doing plan reviews and site inspections. The way we handle it is that we will keep track of all of our actual costs as we go along. And then we will bill the developer on, I believe it's a quarterly basis relative to what those costs are. And at the beginning, they come right out of the collected fees. If for some reason, the subdivision takes repeated inspections, repeated work, and we go past that dollar amount, we have the ability to collect. We send a bill to the developer and we say, you owe us more money than what was there, so begin paying these costs. So we recover all of the actual costs that we incurred to, to manage the subdivision process.
All right, thanks, Dave. I'm sorry, I didn't see that Planning Director Collier raised his hand. I can't see that on my, on my screen, Sean, so make sure you alert me if, if somebody is asking a question. But Planning Director Collier?
Or you? I have a question in reference to a couple of slides previous with respect to the tree component of this. And I know we have recently passed a tree ordinance really designed to help improve the tree canopy, and it's good to see that you guys are putting this in your, your regulations as well, because I think it's an issue all over. My question is with respect to the street trees. Would this be a requirement of developers or when infrastructure is put in? Or is this something that is more of a advocacy piece?
No, it's a requirement.
A requirement, okay.
And, and it's, it's always been a requirement, and we just wanted to call it out. It was kind of buried. Now, most developments, you know, development regulations across the, the, the country require, you know, street trees. What happens are that, this, this is one of those improvements that developers post what's called a performance guarantee, meaning that they're posting a guarantee or a bond or a letter of credit saying that they will perform it. They, street trees and sidewalks are two improvements that commonly are put in after the, the home is built because they get so damaged during construction.
Sure.
So, yeah, so that's what happened, we just, we wanted to call those, those things out. We also did a double check of the street tree species that are required. They have a list that they're allowed to choose from, and making sure that they were decent trees, that they're fairly native to the region. And, and the, the previous iteration of the subdivision regulations in, in 2007 did a good job of listing good trees to, to put in.
So the survivability of these trees are good, because we experienced in Cleveland on some occasions where the investment was being made, but the trees needed to be replaced after a year or so because the, they were not, they were not surviving.
Right.
That's good that you have it, all right.
So, and, and they're, they're required to be a certain caliber or width. And then they're also required to have different species, I believe it's three different species of trees, so it's not a monoculture as well.
Sure, that's great.
All right, thank you. So I, I know we didn't get to the two trustees from the individual townships, and I'd like to turn to them for a moment. So trustee Crest, do you have any comments or comments in regards to this at all?
I think, can you hear me now, Mike?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. First of all, yet we are very supportive. And we appreciate the collaboration that has taken place. Public Works and planning, all the people involved. And we are especially grateful that Sean and Megan took the time to talk with us specifically about our concerns. And we expressed them, they were addressed. We are comfortable with things as they're going. We know that this has been updated at various points in time. This is a good time to get this done, especially in Omse Township with all of our building going on. It's a very, very good moment in time, so I want to thank everybody for their, a job well done, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Finley, do you have any comments?
Yes, I want to thank Megan and Sean and my friend Dave Markward for all the work that they've done on the county subdivision regulations. And I respectfully ask the planning commission to adopt these updates.
Okay, thank you, trustee Finley, and I, I like your Christmas decorations.
You are.
Is there any other comments from any of the, the board members? If none, could I have a motion to adopt the, the resolution?
So moved, but, is that Brown?
Yeah, my second, you move.
Okay, Simon and Brown.
Simon and Brown, okay. Any other further discussion or comments? If none, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Resolution 200514-C. Sean, if you can go over that item?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman Dever, members of the commission. Before I get into the details of what's being proposed, let me just add a little bit of background to the bylaw amendments. First of all, to be clear, we are only asking that these be introduced and then tabled, any discussion reports take place. But then the bylaw amendments be tabled to your next meeting, which is currently scheduled for June the 11th. And the reason for that is there's a provision in your bylaws in Article 11 that states that any amendment that's not mandated by federal, state, or county law, that it cannot be adopted at the meeting that it's introduced. Certainly, we do have some that are tied to, to, to regulations, we have others that are more just procedural in nature, but we're treating them all the same. And so as a result, we're asking that after these are introduced and there's a discussion, that they be tabled to the next meeting. So just as a little bit of refresher, where we, where we've been, or why we're here. The last time the bylaws were updated was in 2015. And more recently, as a result of a vacancy in an officer position, we have two officers on the, on the commission, a chair and vice chair. A vacancy that occurred with the chairman, a chair position in the summer of last year. We discovered that, that, that vacancy could not be filled except at an organizational meeting. An organizational meetings can only be held between January 1st and February 28th of each year. So it creates a little bit of an efficiency and operation potential issue for the commission. As we started to get into that review and addressing that, that, that particular issue, we also uncovered that there were some inaccurate references and inconsistencies with state and county, state law and county ordinances that have been adopted since 2015. So ultimately, our purpose was though to go through and clean up those inefficiencies, make the correct references and then correct any processes that weren't aligned with state law or with county ordinance. And you're going to hear a recurring theme as I go through the different changes. Most of the changes are tied to reflect the current form of county government. Even though we were a county council based form, or county council form of government in 2015, there's still a lot of references to the old Board of County Commissioners. So we're cleaning that up and then making appropriate references to Ohio revise code, county code, or county ordinance. And that was the case in Articles 1 and 2, or Article 1 being the authority, Article 2 being the definitions. We did add a couple of definitions just to provide clarity. Similarly, in Article 3, which is the powers and duties article, there were references to, or C-sections that are, that are not applicable to our agency. One in particular that's worth noting is Article, or I'm sorry, Section 307, 07 of the O R C. That section implied that the county planning is the Economic Development Office for the county, which is not the case. Perhaps we were years ago, but we have not been the case under the current form of government, the Department of Development serves in that, in that role. So we, we removed that reference as well as a couple of other references pertaining to the Board of County Commissioners. And Article 4 was an update to a county ordinance, county council ordinance that was passed in 2015 reflecting our eight regions. That was really when we got into Article 5, 6, and 7, we started to see some inconsistencies in process as they're set out in county ordinance and set out in the Ohio revise code. I'll highlight a couple of these, there's a number of items on the screen. I'm going to point out the, the selection and appointment of members, and particularly as it relates to the, to the Cleveland region. The way the bylaws are crafted right now, it, it states that the, the mayor of Cleveland appoints the member to, for the Cleveland region to the planning commission. That is not consistent with the O R C and is not consistent with county ordinance 2015-0005. In that, those, that section of the O R C and that ordinance gives the, the, the executive has the authority to make the appointment for the eight planning regions. And so we made, we made an adjustment to the bylaws that still reflect that the Cleveland mayor nominates a person to be appointed for the Cleveland region, but the authority ultimately rests with the county executive to make that appointment. Again, the procedure is the same, we're just clarifying who's, what roles each person has and aligning it with, with existing ordinance and with existing state law. Similarly, with the alternates, there was a, the process that's outlined in our bylaws did not match or align with county ordinance or with the Ohio revise code. There were two issues of note. First of all, the way the, the language is, is written in our bylaws, it can be implied that the Cleveland region isn't allowed to have an alternate, because it doesn't specify that they can't have an alternate, even though O R C and other, other mechanisms and other rules would allow them to. an alternate, because it doesn't specify that they can't have an alternate, even though O R C and other, other mechanisms and other rules would allow them to have that. Uh, so we cleaned that up to make sure that's clear that the, the Cleveland region can have an alternate. Um, and we also uh, aligned the alternates that are designated for the county executive and our two county council members that, that sit on our commission. The current process that's in our, in our bylaws says that a letter is sent, once that alternate is, is designated, a letter is sent to the alternate, as well as to me as the executive director. And then to, I would bring it to our planning commission and it be entered into the journal of the planning commission. The way the O R C states and what, how the county ordinance is referenced is that once that designation is made, the letter actually goes to the county council clerk. And then the alternate is entered into the journal of the county council, not to the planning commission. Ultimately, we would make notice to our commission, but that's, that's how the process should work. So we, we cleaned up some language in the, in that article to, to align with the existing O R C language and county ordinance language. Uh, as long as a couple of other changes that are noted here on the screen. Article six, this is where actually we started, uh, this was to an amendment to the officer position, so that when there is a vacancy, we can appoint a, or the, the commission could appoint a, a um, a new chair or vice chair at the next meeting, once the, once that vacancy is made available, or becomes, becomes vacant. Uh, and that, that vacancy would be for the end of that officer's term, which would be until the, the next organizational meeting. Uh, Article seven, uh, these were uh, really a number of changes that are meant to clarify um, and align some inconsistent language, as an example, we, we use the term days in the bylaws, sometimes we say business days. We went with calendar days, because that's a more consistent term versus business days, it can mean, business days can mean different things to different organizations. So we, we, we just used the term calendar days, as well as made a couple of other adjustments uh, with timing and um, with alignment with other procedures. One item we did add, uh, section seven point one zero is conduct of persons appearing before the planning commission. Previously, we had not had any rules, um, uh, specific rules within our bylaws about how that, what, how that process uh, works. Uh, what we, how this is, is crafted is to um, basically, uh, it prevent inflammatory uh, comments, abusive comments, uh, and that comments have to be germane to the business at hand of the, of the commission. Um, it, there was, uh, we did not specify a timeframe, uh, that may be something that the commission wants to consider about how long does a public member of the public have to speak? Uh, how it's crafted in the, in the, in the bylaws, I believe, is it gives uh, authority to the, to the chairperson um, to, to control the length of, of the time. But that might be a, a discussion point for uh, the planning commission. Uh, and finally, uh, Article nine committees, we did not previously have uh, a, a defined procedure about how to create and abolish a committee, it said that we had the ability to do it. We simply added a language that says you can do both of those actions by a majority vote um, of the commission. Um, so that's, and from a high level look at the, the changes that were made, uh, next steps, again, we, we do ask that uh, whatever, we can certainly have our discussion, but then ultimately that this be tabled. Uh, if there are changes that you'd like staff to make, we'll go back and make those changes, and then we'll present this uh, a revised bylaws to you at your next meeting for consideration of approval. Uh, while I was talking, I, I saw a hand get raised, I think it was uh, Director Collier had his hand raised, it's, it might have been another one, and if I see that, I will, I will come back, but that's, I did see uh, Chairman, that Director Collier raised his hand.
Thanks Sean, Director Collier, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, could you go back um, to the uh, previous slide that kind of outlines uh, the nomination and uh, approval of, of members, um, I didn't quite catch the nuances with this. Could you kind of uh, explain that a little bit more in detail for me, uh, so that I'm, I'm really clear on this?
Yeah.
Because it's something I would like to take back.
Absolutely, and I'd be happy to have a conversation with you and Mayor Jackson, uh, as needed as, as well, Director. Uh, so the way the bylaws are currently crafted, um, they read as such that the mayor of the city of Cleveland uh, appoints to the planning commission the member representing the Cleveland region, which is the city of Cleveland in Brown. Um, the way the O R C, and, and that's it, if the, if the, if Mayor Jackson makes their appointment, then that's the appointment that's made to the commission. The way that the O R C is crafted, and the way that the county ordinance is crafted, is that the eight members of the region are appointed by the county, particularly through the ordinance, are appointed by the county executive. Um, so what, the, the nuance of the change is, is that procedurally, the mayor of the city of Cleveland will still designate who they would like to be appointed to the planning commission. The nuance is, is that that would go then to the county, that would go to the county executive, and the county executive has the ultimate authority um, in making that appointment through the county ordinance that already exists.
So it's the county executive, not the mayor that does the appointment, the mayor's making a recommendation technically to the county executive?
Correct, that's, that's how it should be, yes, and that's how we're proposing it to be.
Okay, I, I'm not sure if there's other hands up for any other questions, but the item today, the intent is to table the item today and then bring it up for the discussion at the next meeting, but I'm, I'm open to having further discussion on it now, if, if the membership would like.
We're good, I'm good.
Okay.
For now. For now, Chairman Dever.
Okay, I, I would suggest though, I, I'm, probably it would be beneficial, I, it sounds like um, uh, Director Collier has further questions, and I want to make sure Sean gets with them and, and and maybe works out some of those issues before we do come before uh, the next meeting, so.
On a, Chair Dever, this is our councilwoman, but one thing that I would, um, that, that Sean uh, touched on very briefly is just the timeframe for public comment. I know it's kind of a small thing, but um, I think if we could get a window of timeframe established with the caveat that uh, any extension would be at the discretion of the chairperson, so um, I know council has a three minute rule, I think uh, the city of Warrensville has a three or five minute rule, so just I think setting that, getting that established right now is probably better than having to deal with it later, so that's my only comment for now.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, councilwoman, and I would, I would suggest the three minute rule would be uh, sufficient, but uh, I obviously would like to hear back from the other director or other uh, uh, board members if, if they have any issue with that, longer, shorter, unlimited?
Three to five minutes, oops, sorry. Three to five minutes, three to five minutes is good with me.
I agree, Councilwoman Simon um, totally agrees, I had sent an email yesterday to everybody that, that cannot be wide open, so we've got to put the three, I, I, I think three minute and then just, but we can talk more about it, thanks, Councilwoman Brown.
Yes. Okay, that sounds great, so right now, it sounds like the feeling is, is let's put it at a three minute and we'll continue on with the, that discussion.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, uh, the tabling of this item, can I have a motion to table the item?
I make a motion, we table the item.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second, I believe, from Director Collier. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those against?
Aye.
Okay, it sounds like we had a, a, a clear yes vote to table the motion. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, if we could, is go to resolution uh, two zero zero five one dash D, uh, Sean, could you present on this also?
Yes, sir, uh, again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, this is a request uh, from uh, county planning staff for approval of an interagency agreement uh, with the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works, uh, to provide planning and technical services uh, to, to public works. Uh, this is very similar to, to other agreements that we have currently and have had in the past with Department of Sustainability, Development, Public Safety and Justice Services. Um, Public Works is asking us uh, to provide uh, general planning and technical services uh, to their, to their agency. Uh, that'll be defined further through task orders that they, they, that they have a task order system in place that they use for other vendors. Um, our past work with Public Works has been varied, uh, we've done G I S mapping, data analysis. Uh, we even did pavement condition ratings for uh, for their department not too long ago. Uh, most recently, our work is centered on the Lakefront Public Access Plan, and I suspect that some of the work that we'll be doing as part of this program might be related to that. Um, the contract will be a two-year contract, uh, with a term beginning June first, uh, pending approval by the board, by, by, by the planning commission, as well as by the Board of Control. Uh, in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so with your approval today, uh, I will be able to execute the agreement, uh, and then we will, uh, as Public Works, through their approval process on, on the, on the county administration side. Uh, we hope to get this executed and uh, helping uh, complete some work for the Department of Public Works, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks Sean, is there any comments or questions from the board members? If none, could I have a motion to approve this item?
Prosec.
Prosec, on the motion, is there a second?
Feller's second.
Feller's second, uh, we have a, a, a motion to approve and a second, is there any further comments or questions on the item? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, those opposed? That motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item there is the executive director's report, Sean, you again.
Yep. Uh, and finally, once again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, it's been a couple months since we met as a result of the COVID nineteen uh, state home order. So I have a, a handful of things I want to get through, I'll, I'll try to go through those quickly, but there are some important updates. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Mayor Prosec on his reappointment uh, to the commission, uh, just before the pandemics uh, in the state of home order was issued. Uh, he was reappointed by county council to a new three-year term, uh, that'll run through March of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, in case you're not aware, uh, Mayor Prosec represents the Cuyahoga region, which uh, makes up the eight committees that are listed on the screen. I also shared this via email, but I'd like to officially welcome Melissa Fisco, uh, she's Assistant Law Director with the Law Department. Uh, she's taking over for Stephanie Decker, uh, effective in February of, of, of earlier this year, uh, as our representative for county planning, so welcome to Melissa.
Thank you, I'm excited to work with everyone here, and um, traditionally, I'm, I'm part of uh, the Law Department's Labor and Employment Group, so there's a lot to learn here, and uh, but doing my best to get myself up to speed on, on everything that, that Stephanie had handed off, so I'm looking forward to working with all of you, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, I also have to say thank you to our spring semester co-ops, uh, you met them at, when they first started back in January, uh, Blake Woodruff and Bryson Odom. Uh, they were returning back to the University of Cincinnati for their, for their academic semester, uh, their last day was this past Friday, so best wishes to them, they, they certainly had a, a co-op to remember with uh, with us being, uh, working remotely for, for a better part of uh, of their co-op with us, so uh, good luck to them. Some news from the city of Parma, uh, planning staff had been working with uh, Mayor DeGater and his team uh, on a Parma Town Center Strategic Master Plan. Uh, that plan was recently adopted by their city council. Uh, about the same time that was happening, Mayor DeGater uh, reached out to us and asked us if we could help assist them with some development review. Uh, they had an application for a mixed-use uh, development that was being proposed within the boundary of their master plan. Where they asked us to take a look and see if they're, the conformance with the master plan, as well as uh, some general questions about conformance with some zoning regulations. So we executed and actually have already completed a, a small contract with them to provide a few hours of development reservice. Uh, and we appreciate Mayor DeGater and, and continued relationship working with uh, the, the city of Parma. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Census twenty twenty, uh, that uh, the census is still uh, ongoing, uh, despite uh, some delays and, or some modifications to the schedule to the census that is, is pending, uh, some of it requires some congressional authorization. But nonetheless, the self-response, the, the internet-based response is still absolutely available. Um, please continue to get the message out, uh, we do have a link off of the front page of our website, uh, countyplanning.us, lower left corner. Uh, you'll see the twenty twenty census resp- census match and response rates. If you click on that, it's going to take you to a viewer that looks like on the, the screenshot on the right. Uh, and from there, you can look at different geographies throughout the county, even down to your city level, so you can see what your response rates look like. Uh, right now, this was, I believe, last week's data, uh, we are at a sixty percent response rate. The high end, uh, we have a handful of communities that are up around eighty, or have exceeded eighty percent. On the lower end, you still have a couple of communities that are around thirty percent response rate. Um, so please continue to get that message out there, uh, we, Kevin Leeson in our office, he does put together a uh, it doesn't work very well on, on a PowerPoint, but he does put together a, a, a bar graph of all the different communities and their response rates. Uh, that's due to get updated here this week, uh, what I'll do is I'll send that out to everybody, so you can see uh, just in one shot, uh, how your communities are, are, are doing for responses, but, but please continue to get that message out. As, as you've heard from us, the, the participation in the org, in the census is incredibly important. I would like to give you an update on our budget, um, similar to all your communities, the county is not immune from the revenue reductions that are, that are happening across uh, the state, across the country. Uh, as a general fund agency, um, we are um, included in that uh, discussion, and as part of that, we've been working with the Office of Budget Management about uh, adjustments to our biennial budget, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Uh, the target request that was sent out for us, well, well for everybody, was a fifteen percent reduction in each fiscal year, so fifteen percent in twenty, fifteen percent in twenty-one. Uh, plus a ten-day furlough, uh, for all non-bargaining employees, which all of county planning staff are non-bargaining unit. We, ninety-three percent of our budget is personnel, so it's hard to find reductions without impacting employees. Um, fortunately, we had a few areas where we could pull from or hold back on, I guess is maybe the better way to describe it, um, to, to, to achieve or get to achieve those fifteen, that fifteen percent reduction. Uh, in, in short, what we've proposed, and again, this is still going, uh, we're still going, working with Office of Budget Management, is hold open our budgeted, but yet vacant positions, of which we have two, two full-time equivalents. Uh, suspend and reduce our co-op program, uh, even though they're co-ops, um, they're here full-time when they're here for sixteen weeks. Uh, so it's really the equivalent of uh, two full-time employees. Fortunately, they were able to finish their time out with us, but normally, we would be bringing back another set of uh, of co-ops here next week. Uh, we will not be doing that, uh, the remainder of this year and, and into next. And then we're also suspending our performance-based pay program, which is a little bit unique, we're one of the few agencies, there's a handful of us that offer that type of um, that type of program, uh, but in order to help meet those targets, uh, we are suspending that um, for uh, the two-year period. And of course, then participate in a ten-day furlough, uh, that went into effect April twenty-sixth and is continuing over the next twenty-one pays. Um, and the other item, um, and this was really coordinated with the Department of Sustainability, uh, and as well as the county executive, as our partners in this program, is we are holding the release of the tree, or urban tree canopy program for twenty twenty. All of the work's ready, um, if fortunately the, the things turn around, we can get this released. Um, we're ready to go, uh, it's just, it's, given the budget uh, situation that we're facing, um, a lot of these programs are kind of on hold while they're, while they're continuing to be evaluated at the, at the overall county level. Uh, and I also want to point out that because it does impact all of our communities, we have a few members that serve on the Dopplik and NREC. Um, there are a lot of discussions still going on at the state, uh, for potential reductions, perhaps even eliminations or temporary eliminations of state infrastructure programs and Clean Ohio Conservation Programs. Uh, that, ultimately, that does translate into a revenue loss for us, because we do receive some funds to administer those programs on behalf of Dopplik and NREC. However, at the end of the day, loss in that funding means that's, that's, that's less projects going to be happening around our region and our communities, and so please stay in touch with your legislature, uh, your state legislative representatives, um, and make sure you impress upon them the importance of keeping those programs going. Especially in where, as we hopefully very soon get to a recovery mode, uh, and we, we need to get some uh, projects done and, and people working again. Uh, because I need to end on some positive news, um, uh, we are continuing our remote operations, I shared with you back in I think it was around Saint Patrick's Day, when we, when the county buildings were closed. Uh, we were pretty fortunate in the fact that for the most part, we are on a laptop environment, so we could almost literally hit a button, take our laptops out the door and work from home, it wasn't quite that simple. Um, G I S had a little bit of work that we had to do, mainly from a licensing and, and connection standpoint. Um, but that's allowed us to continue to advance all of our projects, albeit, I say that's not without delay, I uh, there are, there have been some delays, um, sometimes we have technology issues, working through V P Ms is not the most efficient. Uh, but we are, we are advancing our projects, uh, to the extent that we can. Um, one of the exciting things that's starting, that's starting to come out of this, that I think is going to be with us for not just when this is over, but into the future, is we are getting really creative with how we interact with the public and with our clients. Um, normally, our public process involves bringing a whole bunch of people into a room, giving presentations, having open houses, having people put dots and maps. Um, that's not possible right now, uh, it's not gonna be possible for a while, but That's not possible right now. It's not going to be possible for a while, but our communities have, they're helping us think outside the box and how we can engage and how we can interact. And there's some really good things that are starting to come out of that. So stay tuned. If, we're happy to share our tricks and tips that we, that we figure out with anybody as, as we continue to evolve as, as an agency and how we, how we conduct that very important part of, of, of our process. And ultimately though, at the end of the day, we're all, we're all healthy and safe and, and working, so that's, that's good news. And last but not least, our community planning grant, this is the time of year when this program comes out. I think this goes back to twenty fifteen. It's, it's kind of evolved over the last several years. But we are going to be releasing that later this month. We're going to be building off the twenty nineteen program and continuing to offer a full suite of services that we're capable of doing. It, it's, it's billed as a minimum of a hundred fifty thousand dollars in incoming services because what we do is we, we use our staff and our time to produce plans, to help with zoning amendments, to do G I S analysis and a number of other things. And that'll be open to all fifty-nine communities. So please keep an eye out for that. If you have projects that you're interested in or want to talk to us about, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. We're happy to help them any way we can. And Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks, Sean. It's Sunny. Simon. Sean?
Yeah.
So I understand that all the departments of the executive are targeting fifteen percent and looking at furloughs. That's from council's questioning of the executive fiscal and the executive during hearings. This was a recommendation, not a mandate. So I want to be sure that the planning commission, as a semi-autonomous heart of, of the county, is, is really not going to be hampered in, you know, in, in a long-term way because of this. So I see that you did, you know, a good job with these targets, but if this is going to somehow impact the planning commission's future operations and all the plans we had, perhaps they're, you know, this is a target, it's not a requirement. I just want, want to be clear about that from at least the council's understanding.
Yes, it, it was, it was presented to us as a target. We, we were actually in each year, not including the furlough, we didn't do the calculation on the furlough. O B M's doing the calculation on the furlough and then holding back the tree canopy grant. What you see above that, that hold open the budget vacant positions, the co-op program and the performance-based pay, that really represents about a thirteen percent, almost fourteen percent reduction in our budget for this year and about eleven, almost twelve, almost twelve percent budget reduction for next year. Well, to say that it won't hamper us in the short term, not having two full-time employees that we were, we had based our current workload on with our co-ops. Yes, that will have some impact to us. But we're also understanding we're part of the bigger picture here, using general fund dollars and is, while it's, while it does have an impact, it's not, it's, I, I can't, I wouldn't say that it's crippling. For the other things, we're also just holding those open. We aren't, we're, we didn't, we didn't ask, we weren't asked to give back, we didn't propose to give back the vacant positions that we had budgeted. We're just simply holding them open. So the, the, how I, and the intent and how we presented is that we're just, we're just kind of stopping these temporarily and we're going to pick them back up as soon as we can. If, if that's as soon as next year, great. If it's not, we'll continue to work back and forth iteratively with O B M and the administration and of course county council is through this process.
Okay, Sean, I, as a member of the planning commission, I don't agree with having to do this through this year. I think that's, I don't think it's necessary based on our understanding of the budget from a council standpoint. So I, I don't know if this is something we can put on the agenda next time to have some participation from the commission. And by then we'll have the third quarter stats from, from O B M, but, but remember that, that this is not, the planning commission is semi-autonomous and really, you know, to damage the, you know, the plans we had long-term or even into next year is too much, in my opinion. You know, I understand immediate need perhaps to take a breath, but, but not going into the end of the year and next year. That, that's, I think that's way over the top.
Councilwoman, if I could, Mike Dever here. I would, I would suggest, I, I know that there's some hearings that are going on within the, the county council right now and I think by the next planning commission meeting, things may be a little bit clearer for us because we are reviewing that, the, the federal funds that are coming from, from the government and we're still looking at those definitions and those uses. So I, I think this, this conversation is evolving, you know, within the next month or so. I think it'll be clearer to us.
Okay, thanks. That's what I'm asking for review at our next meeting.
Absolutely. I'll put this back on the agenda for our next meeting.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Is there any other comments from members of the commission?
Regarding the, wait, Mr. Chairman, regarding the budget or just as a final word?
Just the executive director's report. If you have any comments or, or anything you'd like to bring up and what he had covered.
No, thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda was comments from the public, and I don't believe we had any, but I'll, I'll ask back to Annette. Was there anything that came in?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from, from the board?
Just for me, Councilwoman Simon. I wanted to see if we could look at the wetland mitigation going forward when we have developments in the county. If we can look to putting provisions somehow that the mitigation has to take place in the county. And I know this is a federal thing and, and we've looked at it with regard to the airport, you know, going outside the county. I just want to know legally if there's any way we can put something in place that mitigation has to, to take place in the county for wetland mitigation for next meeting, if we could just look at that.
So Sean, can, Sean, is that something you can work with and, and look into some of that detail?
Yes, I can. I'll, I'll, I'll look into that and I'll add that to the, with, along with the budget items or additional items to the bylaws for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Anything else from other members of the commission? Okay, if not, if not, then I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Sunny.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the patience at the beginning of the meeting.
Thanks, Sean.